Good evening. It's seven o'clock. Welcome to this, I guess this is the first official session of the new year of the Ashland School District School Board. So without further ado, we will start with our call to order. I bring this meeting to order for July 10th, 2025. And roll check shows that all five school board directors are present. And we will start with the land acknowledgement, which will be read by Russell Hatch.
We acknowledge that the sacred land that we live and learn on today belongs to the Tukelma, Shasta, Modoc, Klamath, and Umquah peoples. We honor and acknowledge the traditional owners of the land we now call the United States. We recognize the Native American people's continuing connection to land, place, waters, and community. We pay our respects to their cultures, country, and elders, past, present, and emerging.
Thank you, Russell. Okay, so without further ado, we move on to organization of the board for the 2025-2026 school year. And, oh, great, that's okay, I cannot review this policy. So in any case, the first thing that we will do is to take the oath of office for the three members who were elected in this most recent election. And in no particular order, we'll have us read this lovely piece of document that you have before us. So if you would like to start, Deltra.
Sure. Hi, Deltra Ferguson. Deltra, push the button.
Okay. Okay, is that correct? Okay.
Pretty close to it.
Be close to it, okay. I, Deltra Ferguson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policies of the Ashland School District. During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of the school board member to the best of my ability. Do I say that part too?
I guess.
Okay. Subscribed and sworn to before me this 10th day of July 2025. It's a little awkward, thank you. Okay, Jordan, go ahead.
I, Jordan Rucklin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policies of the Ashland School District. During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of school board member to the best of my ability. Subscribed and sworn to before me this 10th of July 2025.
Thank you. Okay. And I, Rebecca Dyson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policies of the Ashland School District. During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of school board member to the best of my ability. Subscribed and sworn to before me this 10th day of July 2025. All right. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you. Okay, so next will be the action item, election of board chair. So I will open the floor for nominations for board chair for the 2025-2026 school year.
I nominate Rebecca Dyson.
Thank you, Russell.
A second.
Thank you, Deltra. Do we vote individually, or do we wait for both?
You could wait to see if there's any other nominations, but then you could do a typical vote.
We'll vote for each position, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, so I will ask for a vote, all in favor of myself, for a board chair for the coming year. I guess I can vote for myself. Okay, unanimous, thank you. So I will now open the floor for nominations for vice chair, and I would like to nominate Russell Hatch.
I will second that.
Okay, any other nominations? All right, then I will take a vote, all in favor. All right, unanimous, thank you. All right, that was easy. All right, next up, we have the adoption of the agenda. I have one very brief amendment to the agenda. So under item eight, recurring reports, there will not be an OSEA or an AEA report tonight, but we do have our student reps here, and I commend you for being here on your summer break. That's amazing. Thank you. So you guys can fill in there, and you just, you use that time, that's up to you, just introduce yourselves, and, you know, anything you'd like to say to the crowd here. Our great crowd, thank you. Okay, so I will then take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor? All right, so moved. And then next, we have the consent agenda, which is fairly lengthy this evening. We have approval of minutes from the last session, personnel report for July 2025, Willow Wind Alternative Education Program Assurances, which is an annual review for Willow Wind, the Superintendent Professional Development Plan, which we reviewed earlier this week during a meeting, and our annual designation. I'm not going to go through all of this because it's rather lengthy and not very interesting. So it's basically appointing various people that we have to go through once a year, just as a formality essentially. So that is the consent agenda, and I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Chair, I would love to pull item F, revised policy BD-BDA, board meeting.
Sure. Okay, go ahead.
In this pardon me policy, it does state that our regular board meeting will be held from 6:30 to 9:30 PM with the option for two 30-minute extensions. I would like to challenge ourselves to set that policy to be 6:30 to 9:00, just to be able to respect staff times, students' time, and family times who come to participate.
That is quite a challenge, and I love it. Do I have a second? Or do I, do I take that as a second? Anybody would like?
I will remind folks, we do have two 30-minute extensions to bring it to 10 whenever we need to.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you, Russell. Okay.
That seems appropriate.
Yes. Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, I will then ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of that item that we just voted on.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Or a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Sorry, I forgot to raise my hand.
Okay, we got it ready? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now, sorry, I've got too many pages I'm fiddling around with here. Page three. Oh, awesome. Okay, so our next item on the agenda, we have Alma Galicia, who is one of our eighth graders, who is here to present her capstone project regarding food waste. So you can go ahead and come up to the dais. Or I should, you're ninth grader now, right? Officially. Okay.
All right, thank you, superintendent and school board members for having me come speak tonight. Food is the number one material sent to landfills ahead of plastic and paper. One-third of food produced globally is lost or wasted each year. And as I found during my project, at Trails Outdoor School alone, over 100 pounds of food are wasted each week. My name is Alma Galicia, and I'm here to talk to you about preventing waste at our schools and what I found out about food waste during a school project I did this past year, which we call a capstone at Trails. A capstone is an eighth grade project meant to stretch boundaries and address a problem I saw at my school. In seventh grade, I really started noticing how much food was going to waste. As I was throwing away my tray during lunch, I would see so much food in the trash, some of it completely uneaten. I knew I wanted to do something about it, and this capstone was the perfect opportunity. I worked with a local activist and mentor and chose to conduct a food waste audit at my school. What is a food waste audit? A food waste audit measures how much food gets thrown away, interviews students on why, and with that data, provides solutions for reducing this waste. Once students who got hot lunch, or school lunch, were done with their food, instead of going to throw it away, they would come to our station, and my team of student volunteers and I would sort out their food and ask them why they didn't eat it. At the end of the day, I would weigh the buckets and record that data. We did this over four days during lunch in February. And there are also some graphs I made with the results on the side. So this is a page from the guide I used from the EPA and USDA on how to structure and conduct a food waste audit in order to inform decision-makers about how to prevent food waste. So here are some pictures. So my student volunteers sorting food, and then interviewing other students on why they didn't eat what's on their tray, and then me with my middle school group of volunteers. So here's what we found from the Trails audit, and as you can see on the paper in front of you. 26 pounds of food, about 0.4 pounds per student on average, are wasted every day, over 100 pounds a week. This is just with around 70 kids getting school lunch each day at Trails. Imagine the waste created in all the schools in the district. Now, why is there all this waste? My team and I interviewed students and asked them why they didn't finish their food. I compiled all these responses, and the most common ones were the food quality, 40% of responses, mostly the taste, it was spicy, or they just didn't like the food. For this project, I'm focusing on other ways to bring waste down without changing the menu. Also, the students were full, 33% of responses, and majority of those responses came from elementary students. After some research, I found that per USDA rules, school lunches must have the same amount of food from kindergarten through eighth grade, then doubling in high school. The last top reason was that there was not enough time to finish food, 26% of responses. This past year, we would have a 20-minute lunch period, which included waiting in line for food, so less than the 20 minutes of in-seat time recommended by the CDC, followed by recess. I noticed kids rushing to go to recess and complaining about not having enough time. So with all this data and observations, I made the following recommendations. To the students, I shared a presentation tailored to their age and told them what the share basket was and why they needed to use it more. If you don't know, this share basket is where unopened food items go. We ended up saving 13 pounds of food, of unopened food, over that week, over the week. A major response we heard to why kids didn't finish their food was that they didn't like it or they took too much, so I instilled the importance of only taking what they would eat. I presented at a teacher and staff meeting at my school, and my recommendations for them were lengthening the lunch period, which studies show decrease 10 to 13% of food waste in entree, veggies, and milk. About a quarter of all responses from my audit said, also said, there was not enough time. And more studies show food waste has decreased from 40% to 27% of food served when recess is before lunch, as well as fruit and vegetable consumption going up 54%. So I suggested moving recess to before lunch, and it makes sense because kids will be more active and therefore hungrier when they get to lunch. Trail staff, the Trail staff was enthusiastic about making these changes for the upcoming school year. To the cafeteria staff, I recommended cutting oranges into quarters. This past year, they were cut in half, and with a lack of knives were extremely hard to eat and ended up getting wasted. Also, making clear signage to only take what you will eat, reminding people to use the share basket, and other signs encouraging less waste around the cafeteria. A food scrap pickup program is my main recommendation to all of you. What is a food scrap pickup program? This program would provide a bin for all leftover food scraps to go during school lunch. This would also include compostable cardboard lunch trays and some utensils. After being taken out of the cafeteria each day, the ultra-secure Critter Safe bins would get picked up twice a week to an off-site composting place. My proposal would be a six-month pilot program for Trails Outdoor School in this upcoming school year. This would be free and covered by grants for up to a year. After that, we can reassess. Many schools pay for programs like these themselves, but there are lots of funding options to explore, more grants, city or company sponsorships, or fundraisers. Why is this important? Laws for school nutrition nationwide require kindergartners to be served the same amount of food as eighth graders. This creates so much uneaten food. Trash costs would go down when the food no longer ends up in the garbage. The cardboard trays and wooden utensils we use are also compostable and would save even more, and would save even more waste and trash costs, and material and environmental. Imagine all these single-use trays going to waste every time someone eats school lunch all over the district. This food waste being kept out of landfills also reduces methane emissions, the second largest contributor to greenhouse gases. Separating food from trash also brings education and awareness about, to students, about how much food they waste, and would in turn help reduce the amount of food they waste at home. On average, Oregon families waste $1,600 worth of food each year. This program could reduce waste and money spent on trash. It will be helpful to the students, the district, and our community. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to say, that is super awesome. Thank you for doing that. When you talk about the almost half a pound per student thrown away, what is the, what is the lunchway before? So how much, like, what percent of a lunch is that? Is like, is that about half of what people get?
I actually didn't weigh the, those trays before, but I would guess about a quarter to a half of, yeah, of that.
I just asked about the recess timing. So is, when you have lunch, is it like an open thing? Like, you finish your lunch, you go to recess? Or is there a specific time between lunch and recess? So I, what I mean is, are you in a hurry to finish lunch so you get to recess sooner?
Well, there is a set time for recess, but a lot of times, like, when we line up, I notice in the elementary students as well that people were really rushing to be first in line to get to recess, and they would finish their food early and say they wouldn't have enough time, and then really rush to recess. And I think that having recess first would definitely make them hungrier, and just seems like a good solution.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, this is a great project. Good for you. And I'll be very interested in any follow-up studies that you might do once the program's initiated, just to see what the outcome is.
Yeah.
I would like to say this is an excellent presentation, nicely done. In particular, citing the sources and that they're linked in your presentation, and we can review them, that's fantastic, and that you came not just with a problem, but with solutions. That's very, very well done. Thank you. Curiosity, do you know what the program would cost after the year?
Yeah, so I don't know right now, but I could, I'm working on getting a quote for that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Good job. Okay, next up, we have facilities report with Steve Mitzel.
Good evening. Welcome, new board members. Thank you for having me here this evening. Facilities report, is that the whole district, or did you want a bond update?
What's that?
Did you want a bond update, or did you? Which ones? I want to make sure I'm getting it right here.
Court care, site.
Oh, gotcha, yeah. So that's, that's pretty much the bond. Yeah, so, yeah, I think the most important thing about this project at the high school is that we've actually turned a corner. I did a tour of the site today, and I would say all, all projects within the project have turned to being put back together now. So we're heading towards completion. The exciting thing about that is we're actually ahead of schedule. I don't want to say that in a way that, you know, promises anything in August, because a lot could still happen, but right now, we're somewhere in about a week ahead of where we thought we'd be right now, so we're putting things back together. I think the library is going to be ready sometime around July 21st to start moving furniture back in place, so that all the work will be completely done in there, and then we'll kind of work our way down to that first floor. And the quad, if you actually have some time to go take a look at it, the pavers are going in, and so the whole south end is covered now, and it's starting to make our way towards the body of the quad there. So all that's getting put back together. So we're, what I, what I see there is risk reducing now and problems as we're putting it back together. We ran into a few things. I don't think I shared with you all, we had to replace a big chunk of our water main running right through the quad there. So the district office, thank you, and our IT department, a few others, were without water for just about seven to eight days while we repaired that. Long overdue repair needed once we exposed that, that chunk of pipe there, so we made the decision to go ahead and do that while we had it exposed. So there was a little bit of a delay there, but we caught it pretty quick. Most of the steel moment frames are in place, we have a couple left to get in there, and then we're done with that. So, yeah, it feels really good. There's a bigger crew than I've seen on that campus in a long time. We finally got full access to it on Monday of this week. Prior to that, we had the American Band College still on campus, we had a couple other sports programs and a few things going on. So this week is the first opportunity we've had to have the full campus to ourselves. So we're somewhere between 40 and 50 workers out there every day trying to, to make it work. So if you'd like to stop by and take a look, I'm happy to give you a tour. If you wanted to put a hard hat on, I can take you into the zone. It is a very dangerous zone right now. So if you, if you wanted to take a look at it from the district office parking lot, that's probably going to give you what you need, but to walk through that space right now is pretty dangerous, because there's a lot going on. So if you're interested, I'll do so, but we'll do it with some caution. So, God, I think that's, that's about it.
All right, any questions? Thanks, it looks good.
Yeah, we'll have a pretty comprehensive report that first meeting in August with the board packet and everything. So that, at that point, we should be about two weeks away from, from what we consider the finish line, so we'll get that to you.
Great, thank you. Russell, I got a very brief little tour this week, and we happened to bump into Steve out there. It's nice to see what's going on there, especially the tree, showing us how healthy that tree is now that it's getting better water access, so that's good to see. Okay, so that moves us up to our student rep report. So we are very happy to welcome our new representatives, and let's hear what they have to say.
Hello, everybody. We're super excited to be here, too. I'm Alice, and this is Milo, and we're your student reps for this upcoming school year. So we compiled a little bit of a report about what high schoolers have been doing lately, even though we're on summer break. One of the most exciting things coming up is the Fresh Start Sessions. We offer three, August 11th through the 16th, and there's also a counselor's retreat on August 9th, which happens before that, and that's for the upperclassmen counselors. And then the Fresh Start Retreat is to welcome the incoming freshmen so they can get a sense of the Ashland High School culture and build connections with these upperclassmen. So I know I have a younger sister coming in, and she's super excited about that. We've also had basketball, soccer, football, and cross-country summer practices going in full swing on campus, just preparing for fall and winter seasons. And I know we've all also heard a lot about the construction, and we haven't seen it a lot because we haven't been on campus, but I know lots of high schoolers are very curious and excited to see what's been going on with that once we start the new school year. So I'll pass it over to Milo.
Yeah, so on top of that, excuse me, we have the Pacific Rim Bowl, which is a football match that takes place every two years, where our Ashland High School Grizzlies take on a team from Japan called the Japan All-Stars. And we like, like, alternate locations every two years, and it's at home this year on July 25th. And I know a lot of high school students are excited to go support their team. And we also have, let's see, the Ashland High School Band, Rowing Team, and Football Team were all in the Fourth of July Parade this year. And the Ashland High School Band had a concert on the turf field after the parade ended. Yeah, so that is basically what's been happening on our end of things through the end of July and the beginning of August.
All right, thank you. So for, for those of us who might be interested, is that game, I assume the Pacific Rim Bowl is open to the public? Are there tickets? How does that work?
Yeah, I cannot speak to the tickets. I, you know.
I'm pretty sure they do offer tickets, and it will be at the AHS turf field, and it is open to the public. I'm pretty sure students are able to get in, and the rest of the greater public will be tickets. But I'm not 100% sure, but that's what I think is.
Okay, so we'll stay tuned maybe for some more information about that. Very interesting. All right, it sounds like you guys are keeping busy. That's great. Very exciting. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, we're very happy to have you here, welcome, and we'll try to keep this one pretty short. Okay. Okay, so next up, we have board reports. And typically, anybody who wants to can start off, so I will take a volunteer.
Not much has happened because we're on summer break, but I will say that I was paying attention, we're all paying attention, I'm sure, to what happened in the legislature, kind of in the final stretch, and there were three pieces of legislation that I was particularly interested in. The only two that I can remember off the top of my head, the most important ones as far as I was concerned, were the school funding, which is great, that it worked in our favor, climate, climate education, or climate curriculum was something I was interested in, and, and then I went off radar for 10 days, and during that time, lots of stuff changed at the federal level. So kind of a dizzingly, dizzingly fast speed. I really appreciate, that's a lot to unpack, and so I really appreciate your leadership, Dr. Hatrick, in keeping on top of that while we're on break, and OSBA, too, with all their resources for it. So that's what I've got.
All right, thank you, Dan.
So I'd like to start with gratitude. I'd like, since I'm a new board member, I've found the staff very supportive, and I've appreciated that so much. I'd like to also offer gratitude to former board members who've been very welcoming and have talked to me through some things, and I appreciate that so much. I am in the process of a lot of self-study right now, and what else did I want to say? That I also will continue this process, I guess. I've still got more meetings with more people. I want people to take time off in July, so, but, but at the same time, I do want to meet with them, so I'll be doing a lot of that. I had fun marching in the Fourth of July Parade, that was a kick. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Deltra. Jordan?
Great, just want to say thank you to the staff that have helped onboard me, really appreciate the time, as well as some previous board members who have been doing a quick onboarding to hit the ground running as best we can. I'm looking forward to all that's ahead.
Russell, I know you actually have something to report on, so.
Yeah, so I had, I had the opportunity to speak to the Democratic Party of Oregon as they were doing their caucus meeting, so they brought me into their education caucus. The point of the discussion was to think about legislative focuses moving forward, and they wanted a direct view of what the experience is like in school districts from somebody who's on a school board. So I got to talk to them about our challenge- So I got to talk to them about our challenges that we've faced, our successes in overcoming them, thanks to some incredible work that has been done. And it was a very positive meeting with a focus on collaborative efforts moving forward being the theme, whether it's on a local level, trying to get more integration with CTE programs between different districts and between high schools and colleges, or inter-district and a state as well. So that was, that's my report.
All right, thank you, Russell. So I'm just going to say a few words about the Fourth of July Parade. I'm so glad that both of our new members were able to attend that because that is really just such a great introduction to being part of the district, to be able to be there and represent us and meet all the other people. It's a great, I don't know, it's sort of a unique event where all these people come together and we're marching there with the student council, city council members and our state representatives, and so it's a really nice way to get to know each other in this very casual setting. At one point I was talking to some of our city council and state reps and the thing I remember is one of them said to me, "Our goal for this year is to stay out of the news." And I said, "That's great because that's my goal too." So I know if you don't hear my name, but I am doing my job right. So anyway, I was very happy to see all of you there and it happened to be such a lovely day, not too hot, so that was a lot of fun. And that's all I have. So it looks like Dawn is here, just in time, so this will be our next item. We have our OSBA representative for Southern Oregon who will give us a presentation.
Point of order.
Did I miss public comment?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I called you too early. We do, I'm very sorry, we do have one public comment and that's Anne Gaffney, so if you'd like to come up and go ahead up through here.
Five of the middle.
Oh, uh, middle is good, yeah. Oh, no, no, right here is good. And I know you know the two-minute rule and introduce yourself, that's it.
Absolutely. Yes, this should be less than two minutes. First, welcome to the new board members and returning board members, I'm excited to see all of you up here, thank you all for serving. While on the campaign trail this last season, one of the things that came up was the way our elections function for school board, for the directors of the school board. And as you are all very aware, there are specific seats. Any person who is eligible to serve on the board can choose any of the seats to run, they are not specific to a particular area of our community. And that presents some interesting challenges and some politicking, I would say, in terms of which seats are people going to run for and why and who runs against who. I am very interested, as are many of you, I understand from conversations we've had outside of this room, in looking at the possibility of changing up how we run our school district elections and instead having open seat elections. And what that means is that if there are three seats and more than three people running, the ballot would just list all of the candidates. And so voters would vote for three if there are three seats open, if there are two seats open, they vote for two. And whoever gets the most votes, you know, the top vote getter gets the first, or a seat, the next vote getter gets the next seat until they run out of seats. At the city level, we did recently make a change to have that happen under certain conditions, I believe. So I'd encourage us to do the same at the school district level. All of us in this room have been in the situation where we're looking at a ballot for one position or another and we go, "Oh, I really want to vote both of these people." And you look at another place in the ballot and you go, "Oh, and I really don't want to vote for any one of these." So let's work together to ensure that the will of our voting population here in Ashland can be done when it comes to the school board. I thank you so much for your, oh, oh, the last thing is, I asked the county elections office who's in charge of that and they said we were as a school district. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Anne. All right, now you're up. Thank you. Sorry about that.
I appreciate you making, letting me come and speak and being flexible with my time. I just left my own school board meeting to come here. To speak? Oh, okay, perfect. Anyways, thank you so much for letting me come and present. I am Dawn Watson and I am your Southern Oregon Regional Rep. Let's see. OSBA stands for Oregon School Board Association, so you all know, I have their vision and mission up there. You all are members of OSBA in case you were interested and I just wanted to come to introduce myself. I wanted to make sure I'm a familiar face, some of you guys are coming to Summer Conference or the Annual Conference in November, and it's nice to kind of know somebody from your region to be there. I wanted to let you know what my regional representative role is and I'll be talking about that later, and also be able to answer questions because sometimes when you're new and sometimes when you're not, I have lots of questions still. I've been on the board for quite a while and I still have questions that I like to ask people. So I've been on the Phoenix Talent School Board since 2013. I've been an OSBA Board of Directors since 2020 and thank you all for voting for me the last few years. Before the Board of Directors, I was the LPC representative, which is Legislative Policy Representative. I am currently the OSBA Acting President-elect and Vice President, all in one. So what happened was I was Vice President, the President-elect for OSBA goes Secretary Treasurer, Vice President, President-elect, President and past President. So the President-elect lost her election, so they called and said, "Would you mind doing both duties until the first of the year?" So I said, "Yes, I would do both your duties for the first of the year." And most likely I will be voted President in our September, in our September meeting. I'm also on the PACE Board of Trustees. PACE is the insurance section of OSBA and I've been on the PACE Board of Trustees since 2020 and I am the only school board member on the Board of Trustees and so my job is to be a voice for every school board member in Oregon, which is sometimes a little bit of a challenge. I also sit on various other committees for OSBA. I'm not going to go into all of those because there's a lot. I don't know how to say no sometimes. OSBA has 14 regions. Some regions have multiple Board of Directors that represent them depending on the population of that region. We are the Southern Oregon region and so I represent Josephine and Jackson County and the lists of the schools are up there and the ESD. So my duties is to be a liaison for our region to make sure our region voice is being heard. I will send you out emails, you probably will get tired of getting emails from me, I sent out three this month already. If you're not getting the emails, please let me know. Usually there are calls to action or information. I sent out an email about the Governor's Executive Order of Cell Phone Policies and I sent out an email yesterday about Senator Goldin having a town hall here in Ashland and so, but you can also send me, respond and ask me any questions. I also host regional roundtables at the conference, so at the conference we will have a regional time where we can all talk and talk about challenges or OSBA may have some questions or I may talk a little bit about some OSBA things and then we can go into conversation about what we would like to talk about. It becomes very interesting. We have a Fall Regional Meeting in Ashland at the end of October, tentatively, I think it's the 20th or 21st. And then we'll get together and talk about, usually OSBA talks about legislative coming up and different OSBA policies, but we also have a chance to talk about some regional things going on. I will possibly host a legislative reception, you'll get an email from me about that. In January, especially during legislative session, we invite all the legislators for the region, Josephine and Jackson County. We usually do it at Phoenix High School because it's easier for me to set all that schedule up and we have conversations with our representatives and I feel like it goes pretty well most of the time. They listen and we can have, we can build relationships with them and so that's something, OSBA gives us a stipend of $500 to do that. If we choose to do something else, we can, but that's usually what our region votes on. I'm also a resource if you need anything else. Sometimes we have questions, you know, like what's the parking like at the Summer Conference or something like that? So I can answer anything for that at all. The Summer Board Conference, I have some highlights, these necessarily aren't highlights, I couldn't think of a better word, but they're the things that I get most questions on. So there's going to be a Board Chair Cafe and I highly recommend the Chair and Vice Chair attend. I don't know if you have attended the Board Chair Cafes online, but they're really useful. OSBA Legislative Policy Committee Meeting is going to be during conference and if you're interested in that, I think that would be a great meeting to go to. I will be chairing it, so I will be there. We will, Sarah Crawford was your Regional LPC representative and she did not run for reelection, so there is an opening. So OSBA will be sending out a information in August about the opening and then the election process will start in September. Each board can nominate someone if they want and then all the nominees will be voted by the boards as a process. Another little change as well, if I do become President of OSBA, there will be an open spot for, they will, you won't go up for election, that's the point, an open spot because we're a region where there's only one representative and it's too much work for the President to try to represent the region and the state. So there will possibly be another opening for that. So there, in other words, there might be two openings to represent our region as well. So the LPC meeting might be great because all the Board of Directors will be there and all the LPC members and you can see if this is something that you'd be interested in. We're also having a roundtable talking about Board of Director roles and LPC roles and so that might be also, if that's something that you're interested in, that might be a good thing to attend. The Oregon Rule School Board's Caucus Meeting is also during the Summer Conference and you are a member of the Rule Caucus, so you can attend if you would like. And that's rather new, I think this is going on our second year of Rule Caucus and so that is very interesting. It was to bring a voice to the Rule Schools, a lot of the Rule Schools were feeling like they didn't have a voice, so we started a caucus. Then there is the School Board Members of Color Caucus Meeting as well, that is open to everyone. If you are, if you self-identify as a person of color, you are automatically in the caucus. If you, they call it Friends of Caucus, if you do not identify but feel like these, the issues and you want to be helpful with the caucus, you can also attend as a friend and those are very interesting meetings as well. The LGBQIA2S+ is still an Advisory Committee, they are also having a meeting and again, it's self-identified, but you can also come as an ally or a friend. And then we'll have regional meetings, I'll be sending out an email, talking about topics that OSBA would have, but also if there's anybody that has questions on the topics. And then I don't know if you all got, the new members got a little brochure from OSBA, but there is a part on the website that is just specific to new members that has a whole bunch of information. It's a lot, so it is, well, it's really in-depth and for everybody, their OSBA does have a section of their webinars, of their past webinars that they've had that you can go and get information on. And that is all I have for you. I thank you for your time, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. No questions. All right, there is, as she said, and I know for you guys especially, there's a wealth of information to be found on the OSBA website and all those, the webinars and things can be very helpful as far as finding answers to questions.
I just wanted to say that Dawn is a powerhouse, if you couldn't tell, from all of her activities, but we are very lucky to have her in the region and she is an awesome resource.
Yes, so, thank you. Okay, I'm going to try not to miss anything else. So next up we have Superintendent Report with Dr. Joseph Hatrick.
All right, that's me. So hopefully you're all enjoying a nice summer. Our 12-month employees are keeping very busy and I'm going to keep tonight's report relatively brief. So first, as you're likely aware, we recently made a few leadership announcements and I just want to repeat them here. So with Principal Bell's departure so late in the year, we made the decision to appoint Francisco Atanis as interim principal of Ashland High School for the '25-'26 school year. We're currently considering options for the Assistant Principal Athletic Director position and will announce those as soon as we're able. At Helman Elementary School, Corinne McGinnis has decided not to return and in her place, Susan Hollandsworth has been appointed as interim principal also for the '25-'26 school year. We'll be conducting full-scale principal searches for both schools during second semester of this upcoming year and it will be robust and collaborative, so more information to come as we get closer to that. As Dan Ruby mentioned, on June 30th, the federal administration notified states that it was not going to allocate fiscal year '25 funds for Title 1C, Title 2A, Title 3A, Title 4A, and Title 4B until further review. We really don't have a lot of information about it yet, but if we were to lose those funds, Ashland School District could be required to reduce over $150,000 and potentially cut more teachers, classified staff, professional development, and our safety position if that were to happen. So I've got a call to action for the board, to anybody listening. We must urge the White House to release fiscal year '25 title funds. We need your help to urge the Trump administration to release the funds that are being withheld from public schools. Contact your members of Congress and urge them to request the immediate release of these There was an emergency superintendent meeting the day after, or two days after, and on that meeting we also were notified about the executive order from Governor Kotek, Order 25-09, which directed all K-12 public schools in Oregon to prohibit the use of personal electronic devices during the instructional day. School districts must adopt policies aligned with this order by October 31st, '25, with full implementation by January 1st, 2026 at the latest. So we're still waiting for a lot of guidance from Oregon Department of Education and OSBA and will continue to apply the guidance we receive to the Ashland School District's existing cell phone policy, which is JFCEB, to ensure that we remain in compliance. I anticipate that we're going to have updates for the August board meeting, but September at the latest when we can look at the policy revisions. There are some unintended consequences in there that we're going to have to navigate, but I'll just continue to keep the board updated and then obviously we'll be looking at that policy for some revisions. I also want to make a reminder that our summer meal program is underway. That goes from June 9th through August 15th. It's served daily, for free, ages 1 through 18. It's hosted at Ashland Middle School and Bellevue Elementary. Breakfast is served from 8:15 to 9:00 AM and lunch from 11:45 AM to 12:45 PM. Also, I just want to give a quick little highlight of some of our summer priorities at the district office. So we're tackling a lot with not enough time. So it's our hope that, kind of, we're reviewing last year, a couple of us, obviously we're new in our roles at the district office, so kind of last year was an opportunity to assess and this summer implement some or develop some improvement. So what we're really looking at is improving processes, so both develop and uncover some documented processes. That can be field trips, clubs versus sports, transformation, transportation, there it is, guidance, we will transform it. Professional development, staff handbooks for uniformity across sites, student handbooks for consistency, better clarity and better to distribute all cabinet roles and responsibilities. We want to make it super clear what everybody's responsible for, who to go to for what. We want to make it super clear what everybody's responsible for, who to go to for what, and also identify policies for review. It's a massive undertaking, but with a year under our belt, we feel like it's really the perfect time to start doing that, continue the stabilization process. And what it really does is it ensures informational resources are more readily available for all staff. Without that information at everybody's fingertips, confusion does not lend itself very well to confidence and clarity. So we want to address those things. And also, thank you, Milo. I'm going to add to his report, which I'm going to answer those questions. So yes, Pacific Rim Bowl is coming up. I want to invite everybody to attend, and I'm going to spell out all of the different events. So we have Tuesday, July 22nd, peace ceremony at Lithia Park Bandshell at noon. Tuesday, July 22nd at 5 o'clock p.m., Kitchell games at Walter A. Phillips Field. Friday, the 25th, 6:30 p.m., pre-game ceremony, followed by the actual game at 7 o'clock p.m. Tickets are available, $10 general, $5 students with ID. We hope to see you all there. Happy to answer any questions.
I hope you're going to be sending out an email with all of that because that was way more than we'll...
It will happen.
Okay, thank you.
You didn't remember it all?
I just have one question regarding the cell phone. I guess I'm just curious how much potentially difference there will be between the policy that we already have in place, which, I mean, I understand it's different for our different sites. We have a policy specifically for the high school, which I imagine is the most restrictive one that we've created. Is that, is that going to require a lot more, or is it...
Not a lot. Actually, the policy that we drafted addressed some of the things that they've already put in. So some of the different accommodations. They did add a few extra accommodations, which we're really going to have to navigate. The one, there has to be specific clarity about storage, which is going to be a challenge. Maybe I say that's another unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
Also, direction about how school personnel deal with noncompliance. But also, the thing that has been challenging is, in the media, it's talked a lot about how enforcement can't occur, which I think is actually putting up a big roadblock that we're going to have to navigate. So there are also exceptions, which is super helpful for us because one of our biggest concerns was, well, how, if we have open campuses at the high school, how can students, you know, go to lunch safely without a cell phone? Well, they've allowed provisions that when students are off campus, they can have a cell phone. So that is, I appreciate that. So there is a lot of alignment with what we've already done. I think there will be some small tweaks. My biggest concern is the cost.
Of course.
Yep, of course.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, so next we move on to finance report with Sheri Ely. More good news, please.
I know this is now like our favorite part of the meeting.
I know, right?
I think we're on already. So you guys have a copy of the report? Do I need to do anything? There we go. I don't have anything dramatic to share. It is good news, though. Our ending fund balance looks like it's coming in at 1.7 million. I was estimating 1.2-ish, so we're doing good there. It's not necessarily on the revenue side. The revenue's holding pretty steady, like I've reported in the previous months. So not seeing any increase there. But we did see a nice reduction in our expenditure, so about two, almost 2.7 savings on the expenditure side, which I think is really amazing. As I've mentioned before, the team at Ashland has done a great job of cutting the expenses when they knew that they were having some significant issues. So it's definitely showing up here in the financial report, those savings. So I don't have anything else. No more dramatic news at this point. So do you guys have any questions or...
Well, that is good news. Anybody questions? Round of applause. Yes, it is. I mean, this is really, for those of you, I mean, I know you've been following the meetings, but for those of you who are new, this is a very welcome change that we are getting consistently.
Getting back on track.
Stronger numbers, so that's really great. Okay, thank you, Sheri.
Yes, thank you, guys.
All right, and we have no unfinished or new business this month. So with that, I can move on to announcements and appointments, unless anybody has anything else to add. The board will meet for a two-day board retreat on July 28th and 29th, 2025, in the district office. The board will hold its next regular session on Thursday, August 14th, at 6:30 p.m. So for those of you out there who may have missed it, we are moving the meeting up from 7 to 6:30 p.m., but of course, with the hope that we will then be ending significantly earlier. And that will be 6:30 in City Council Chambers, right here. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Wow, 7:56, it's a new record.